Mr. Ten. Mrs. Knight.
Okay. Approval of minutes, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes that we've received? Seeing none, those are approved as written and distributed. Reports and communication, Mayor Hardman.
So I want to just thank our great team of individuals that put together the holiday festivities that we have for our employees and our retirees. It was a wonderful event, so those of you who were able to make it, I think you saw that, and it's great to see everybody there, great work on behalf of Spectra in putting that together and having a great meal for all of our folks here in the city. And thank you to all of council in helping to support that and paying for this year's meal. I am sure everybody appreciates that and your generosity in addition to all the other things that we have been able to do for our employees at the end of the year, this year, because of the successful year that we have seen and had here in 2021. Also, a big thanks to the folks that put on our Christmas on the Loop or festivities this past weekend. The weather did not cooperate with us, at least for the start. The rain at least stopped, so that got some folks out in the wind and the cold, but to take carriage rides and jump and bouncy houses and eat cotton candy if it wasn't being blown away, and to hear our vocal chamber ensemble from Princeton sing at That Dog Cafe. And we appreciate them for giving them a place to put a roof over their head so they could perform this past Saturday. So I think ultimately it was a successful event. We got folks into our businesses to see what exactly exists here in downtown Sharonville, the kind of places they can go. Ms. Hoppy was saying she was at already that morning, and they had folks flowing in and out of the business all morning. As a result, one of our new businesses, Anything Airbrushed Plus, down the street managed to, they were giving away free airbrush stockings, and so they kept them busy from what I could see from some of their social media posts. And I know that there were folks coming into That Dog Cafe, because I was in there as well, and enjoying what they have to offer. And there were so many other things that were going on, so I can't mention every business that's downtown, but we appreciate their partnership with us. The reason we do that is to bring people into the downtown so they can see what those folks have to offer, encourage them to come into the downtown, not just on that one Saturday a year, but throughout the year. So thanks to our team in helping put that all together. And that is mostly one last thing. So this past week, or maybe it was the week before, I had the pleasure to join Jim Doughton downtown as we spoke with the Cincinnati Business Committee, who works on putting together recommendations for the state capital budget grant process. So we proposed to them some additional funding for our convention center expansion and shared with them what those needs are. Hopefully, as they prioritize the region's needs, they'll see Sharonville as being one of them, as they make their recommendations to our state legislators. And so a big thanks to George Glover, who we have out here in the gallery this evening, and his help in making all of those presentations possible, giving us pointers and hints in making sure where we're supposed to be, when we're supposed to be there, and the continued work that he does on our behalf up in the State House. You obviously have legislation tonight as it relates to George. We hope that you will support that. He is an invaluable resource that we have to us here in Sharonville to assist us in continuing to work in many ways with the state in the way that the things they do, not just in giving out money, but in some of the legislation and proposals they float out there that have an impact to us as a city. And so we truly appreciate George's voice and ability to advocate on our behalf when it comes to those issues all the time. Finally, this is obviously our big year where we make some pretty big decisions with some pretty big dollar figures attached to it. But I think we've had a very, as I stated a little bit earlier, a very successful 2021, despite the fact that we are living through COVID times. We are seeing great work on behalf of the folks that work here in Sharonville and the employers that make so much of what we do successful. We certainly are looking for a very similar year in 2022. But thank you all for your hard work on your budget. I encourage you to vote for all of these great appropriation and budget things that are in front of you tonight. Scott McKeon has been burning the midnight oil for the last week plus, if not more, to get these things in front of you in a timely manner so that you can pass them. And we will be ready to march into 2022 with the same enthusiasm, same excitement, and same responsible behavior that we always do to our residents and our businesses in this community. That is all I have for this evening.
Are there any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our Safety Service Director, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. Before we get into the legislation this evening, we have two presentations or discussions. One, Nestor Melnick from MSA Design is here with members of his team to talk about an award our police department design recently received.
Good evening, thank you. Glad to be back here. I think last time I was here was when you had all voted on the resolution to proceed with the police station. It's been a few years, but I would like to let you know that we did submit the new Sharonville Police Station for a National Design Award, Officer Law Enforcement Design Award for 2021. And in the facilities, less than 50,000 square feet, it won the bronze award. So I wanted to commend everyone on council, the mayor, the staff, Jim, the police department, Scott, again crunching numbers, everyone who is involved in this. This is a national award. It is published nationally, and law enforcement departments and designers look at these awards and they look at these buildings as examples of what the best of the best is and ongoing trends in operation. We can't thank you enough. MSA cannot thank you enough for the support of the station. I know the police department can't thank you enough for the support of the station. And this is just a little way of saying, good job for all of us. We enjoyed it. I think everybody in the police department of the city is enjoying it, hopefully, and this is a good recognition for you that it is a top-notch facility in the nation. So congratulations. And Mayor, I guess I'll present this to you.
You've got cameras here, so we're going to come around. Is Jim still here?
Yes, he's here.
Jim? We have our brand-new sign too.
Oh, yeah.
That just got announced.
Yeah.
We'll move this out of the way so we can actually, out of the security. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Working with, I've already heard, they're sending folks out to come see our facility because they're doing a movie room there, so we know what great work you guys have done on the app. Any of our folks up there at the police department are happy with what they've got, so thank you for your work. I hope they enjoy it. Thank you. Go to work with them when they come to tour the facility. Be sure to give them a hand.
The second item this evening, Erica and Marina from Gorilla Glue are here this evening. They are two members of Gorilla Glue's sustainability team called Gorillas Go Green.
Yay!
And they are here to talk about a recognition that they recently received, the 513 Green Certification Recognition.
Awesome, thanks for having us. Hi, I'm Erica Wetzel. I'm one of the co-leads for the Gorillas Go Green team.
And I'm Marina Porter. I'm the other co-lead. So, yeah, Gorillas Go Green started in 2019 with a mission to educate our employees on things they can do in their daily lives, either at work or at home, that can really have a great environmental impact, but also to notice that we are a large corporation, so with that, we have a larger impact on the environment. So every business decision that we make, we have to think about how it will affect future generations and the environment. So our team has about 30 members that help plan events, educational resources, and shape corporate policies. Our big event is Earth Day, so each year we have an Earth Day celebration. This past year, we combined it with Arbor Day and did a week-long event and had daily topics for sustainability, from recycling to eating local. And then we wrapped up the week by planting a tree in a wildflower garden on our property.
So then, made a lot of great progress with some of these employee programs, and last year, we learned about the Hamilton County Resource Department sponsors this 513 Green program. And what it is, is it's really a framework to help companies such as ours, and I would encourage any company, big or small, to check it out. They provide a framework across five different metrics. There's probably about 115 areas where you can earn points, and it takes 45 points to get the certification. So what's been really cool is over the last year, we've worked on a lot of different things, and it's been things like incorporating plants into our office space to improve oxygen flow and health and wellbeing of employees, to measuring and recording how we're using electric and water, things our facilities were already doing a great job at, but we kind of were able to take credit for that. Messages about thinking before you print, turning lights off at the end of the day, automatic timers, that kind of stuff. And so gave us a really great framework, and in November, we welcomed Mary from the department to our office and gave her a tour and showed her all the work we were doing, and she confirmed our certification. So we were super excited to receive that kind of recognition for the hard work we've been doing to help make our facility more sustainable.
You were only one of 16-ish, right?
I think there's only, I think it's like only about 10 so far, less than 10. Maybe it was 16. I can't remember. But, yeah, it's a pretty new program. I mean, I'd encourage even, you know, this building could look into it. It's a pretty cool program, and, you know, it's really just encouraging, training employees and helping them learn how to be more sustainable.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
The legislation this evening, the first, one, two, three, four, five. Five are finance-related, and Scott's here to talk about those.
Good evening. Yeah, like Jim said, we have a handful of pieces of legislation here. Feel free to ask questions at any time. Ordinance 2021 74E is renewing our depository agreements. This runs for five years. I was kind of shocked a month or so ago when I realized it had been five years since we had done this one last. So this allows us to sign any necessary agreements to hold deposits at these institutions. It's not binding. It's just something we have to have in place, and we also provide them, we get a signed copy of our investment policy back from these entities. And we changed our investment policy last in 2013. Ordinance 2021 75E is our annual salary ordinance. This goes ahead and implements the 3% cost of living, approved at last month's meeting. We went through, there was only three or four kind of tweaks that we had made to this ordinance. We went through those in detail with law committee and had very good discussions on those. So unless there's any questions. Ordinance 2021 76E, this is the 2022 operating budget under the first blush. I emailed out Friday evening kind of the reconciliation of, you know, how we got from the document we had in front of us back in early November at the work session to what this ordinance has kind of at the very bottom as a total of $50.7 million. Informally, I think this may be our first annual operating budget in excess of $50 million. So a lot of that was some things that popped up on that reconciliation. We have three OPWC grants, the total of somewhere around $2 million total with Hawk Road, Sharon Road, Right Turn Lane, and the Kemper Resurfacing. I mean, that obviously kind of pushes it up. We also, one of the things, the big additions to this from where we were at the work session was adding into the 608, the convention center debt fund, adding the principal and interest payments for next year's debt payment that's due in June for interest and in December for the principal and interest payment. The next piece of legislation, 2021 77E, this authorizes the transfers that are incorporated into the annual budget. Really, the only one that's, and it's been this number for several years, but kind of the big highlight there is the $2.3 million that we continue to contribute to capital each year. So as we've paid debt off over the years, and the fire, you know, fire fund doesn't have debt, you know, this is simpler than it was several years ago. It's a pretty short piece of legislation. 2021 78E, that's been the one that is really had a lot of work on it, and it's, to kind of put the 2021 budget to rest, that's the one that's kind of, has been, you know, had my attention here for the last six weeks or so. This is our last shot, you know, after tonight, you know, the 21 budget is in wet cement. We just got to sit and wait and let it dry. So several things going on here. A couple of minor just budgetary cleanup things there in section one. The FEMA capital project is kind of the big thing there. That's what we talked about with Finance Committee the other day. This is to go ahead and take care of all the costs needed up to construction. The FEMA project is one of two or three things that I'm confident we're going to have to come back next year, in 2022, and go ahead and get the construction portion of that project added to the appropriations. So that's a big one that will be coming down the pike in '22. In section two, we make some set-asides. The million dollars there at the very top will pay off the, what is owed on the police station. So as of next June, that building will be paid off. The $200,000 to the Facilities Improvement Fund. The big one there is a capital set-aside to the 401 fund of anything over $7.8 million, up to $6.5 million. So that's kind of awful lofty goal that that might be that high. I'm kind of thinking that'll be somewhere between four and a half, maybe a little over five million. So another very healthy set-aside to kind of add to the millions of dollars we've set aside to capital and debt over the last six or seven years. Fire Fund's making a couple of set-asides here, separation benefits fund, to the Firehouse Capital Fund, source a remodel of the Fields Zertle Station here in the next year or so. And then another contribution for their equipment fund to buy the trucks and the vehicles that they use in their service. Section three is to make an advance to the FEMA fund to kind of fund these dollars before we get reimbursement from FEMA, or eventually a partial reimbursement from ODOT for a local share of the project. So there is a likely chance, as we discussed at Finance Committee, a small portion of this number might end up, you know, not being able to be funded elsewhere, and we will come back in the future and do legislation to reclassify that from an advance to a transfer. It's not going to come back, so, just to make that clear. Section four is just a minor tweak, kind of under the hotel tax incentive agreement with the Hyatt Place, we forgave two more quarters this year as the hotel industry was recouping, and they did better and better. They had a really great fourth quarter, so we were happy to lend them some more assistance. They came up just shy, what this is kind of saying in the verbiage there, they came up just shy of $100,000 between their two quarterly payments and two quarters of a hotel tax. So they had, you know, really strong third quarter and second quarter collections. That was, it was good to see some rebound. And our hotel tax in general started to really see some health. Those numbers are kind of a little bit not true photos of 2020 and 2021 because the, you know, receipts come in a kind of a quarter in arrears, so they end up looking a little bit equal, but we should, in 2021, a fair amount higher than we expected with motel tax, so we were excited about that. That is it for the legislation, unless anybody has any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Ordinance 2021 79E references the partnership with George Glover that the Mayor Hardman was referencing before. George is here this evening to answer any questions or to perhaps say a few words. I'm not sure if George wants to take that opportunity or not.
You won't find many efforts that will turn down opportunity to say a few words. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity, and as Mayor Hardman said, it's been a very long and I think a very fruitful and beneficial mutual relationship with the City of Sharonville and myself over the years. We have been involved in a number of projects going back probably 10, 11, 12 years. Yes, there have been a number of capital projects we've been involved in, including expansion of the Sharonville Convention Center. Last, the last State of Ohio capital budget, we were able to get $200,000 for the expansion renovation, I believe, of the Gorman Park. This year, and I might point out that the State of Ohio capital budget comes out every two years interspersed with the State of Ohio operating budget every other year. So next year, 2022, will be the biannual State of Ohio capital budget. We have submitted, as Mayor Hardman put out, stated a request for $850,000 for renovation expansion to the Sharonville Convention Center. We put a lot of work into this project and certainly to the, to the requests and application for it. If there are specific questions regarding how we might spend that money, I'd be glad to try to respond that to you. However, I'm sure Jim Dowell has much more detailed information on that. Generally speaking, I will tell you though that these projects, and just to give you a flavor, a measurement, a quick snapshot of what we're up against for these type of dollars, there are 60, I think 66 requests just in Hamlet County alone for various State of Ohio capital projects. They range anywhere from a couple hundred thousand dollars, perhaps $50,000, all the way up to 2 or 3 million dollars. One project even requested $10 million. The total amount was about 66 million dollars, about $75 million covered over about 66 projects. The amount of money expected to come back to Hamlet County through the State of Ohio for the next capital budget will probably be in the range of $20 million. That gives you some estimate, some measurement, some snapshot, what we're up against. I feel good about requests, and one of the reasons why I feel good is because we put a lot of time and effort into it, and it's justified. We've, we've shown the numbers. We've shown that the trend going forward. We've shown what the economic impact be not just the city of Sharonville, but to this entire part of the county as well. We've had a number of good community partners that have stepped forward and give us support for our project as well. We'll know, we'll have a better idea sometime in the first quarter of next year how we did, and as usually is done with the State of Ohio capital project budget. It'll be enacted, I would believe, by the second quarter of next year with those funds being available fiscal year, the next fiscal year, State of Ohio after July 1st. So we have, we have some time in front of us, about six months. We will continue to advocate hard with our local elected officials. And that brings me newly to my final point. Any success we've had, yes, I'm glad to represent and advocate for the City of Sharonville and the Sharonville Convention Center, but I can assure you, you as a client, you as an organization, you as a city, stand by itself and sell yourself well to our legislators. It makes no difference if it's a Democrat, Republican, House or Senate. They understand the value of what you represent, and that helps my job quite a bit. So thank you for your ongoing positive relationships with our elected officials. When you see them over the holidays or wherever you might see them in Kroger over the weekend, take a moment to say thank you because they really are supportive of our efforts here in the City of Sharonville. Only other point I would mention at this, at this, as Mayor Hardman mentioned, it isn't just appropriations. It isn't just money coming back to the localities, which is not a bad thing, but we also involve a number of what we call policy issues as well. And those policy issues can cover a wide away, a wide array of legislation. And we're dealing with people working, your employees working at home, and how do you handle the tax process? The tax questions revolving around that, who pays it, who doesn't get it, that type of thing. It's a hot issue, as I'm sure you know, with municipalities throughout the State of Ohio. There's even been legislation introduced recently by an area state representative dealing with railroad crossings and the impact it has on local population and local traffic signals. So it gives you a flavor of what type of bills that can impact any municipality, any size within the State of Ohio. There are a lot of them, and we keep a close eye on them as well. So again, thank you for this opportunity. If there are any questions I could try to respond to, Mayor Hardman, Madam President, and the rest of the council, I'll be glad to do that.
If anyone has questions?
Thanks for the question.
You make my job much easier. Thank you all very much.
Hey. Ordinance 2021-81E deals with EMS agreement with the Village of Glendale. Chief Sunderman's here this evening to talk about that.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll give you some quick background, and if I don't get in-depth enough, I'm happy to take any questions. We signed an agreement with the Village of Glendale in late '20 to provide their EMS coverage in '21. When we got into about September, we realized that the amount that we were billing, we were not receiving, those estimates originally were somewhere we'd receive around 85%, recover 85% of our EMS billing. By September, we were only somewhere in the 45% range. So at that time, back then, Chief Mackey sent them a letter. We had 90 days to end the contract. They were given 90 days' notice with Chief Mackey and Mr. Lucas, and then that started the negotiations of how are we going to serve Glendale going forward, or do they want our service going forward? As we looked at the amount that we were not recovering, it came to about $62,000. At that point in time, EMS billing can be as far as 90 and even 120 days in the rear. So we did think that recovered number would come down just a little bit. So we were looking at that number mid-year at $62,000 not recovered. That's how we came up with a contract amount of $60,000 a year. So in mid-October, we met with the fire chief over there, Chief Hardwick, and their village administrator, David Lumpston, and we proposed to continue our EMS contract for the price of $60,000 per year. That would be $5,000 a month, and we would basically invoice them $5,000 a month. Their council agreed to that on the 7th of December, and they signed the agreement, which I assume is in your packet, and then they also passed legislation on the 7th agreeing to the contract change. So they, they have agreed that we would continue to cover their EMS in 2022 for a price of $60,000 per year.
Just one clarification. It's $60,000 a year plus?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I need to, I, I keep assuming that part. I, yeah, I need to not assume that. We will continue to bill, just as we do the Sharonville residents, we will continue to bill their insurance for that service as well. Any questions?
Just one question. How it's free for the residents other than the secondary charge? I guess you can say what the insurance does it cover?
Okay. So in Glendale, when we bill those patients, it goes to their insurance company first, and depending on that recovery amount, or if there's no insurance, they will send a separate collection notice to the actual patient.
Okay, that's what I was, was going to ask.
So are, are you want me to get into the non-recoverable side of it?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, I was just trying to compare like how, how residents here bill. Is it the same?
I understand. Okay. There's, there are slight differences.
Okay.
So in Sharonville, if we make a run on a Sharonville resident, that is what they call soft billing. That goes to insurance only, and whatever insurance pays, we will take that as payment in whole. When we go mutual aid, and we consider that even contractual with Glendale, that we would then send a secondary bill if insurance did not cover the entire amount. And that's all Medicare billing rates kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Resolution 2021-R16E is an annual piece of legislation that the Ohio Revised Code requires for us to put surplus property on the internet for sale. We do have a late-delivery request, Ordinance 2021-82E, that Mark will talk about. I, as I mentioned to one or two of you before, I think we should give Mark some grief because of his last piece of legislation being a late-delivery, you know, request, but.
You mean you want him to actually do something this time?
You get what you pay for.
I've talked about some of these opioid settlements off and on, and earlier this year, the Biggie Purdue Pharma, we opted to participate in, and that's been filed. And then a couple of months ago, there was a One Ohio opioid settlement that we opted to participate in. And then I think it was what, Monday or Tuesday this week, Jim? Jim sent me a notice from the Ohio Municipal League from One Ohio saying that if you've already opted into One Ohio, great, but oh, by the way, you may not be covered for the Johnson &amp; Johnson opioid settlement. And as a result, I basically reworked just a little bit the ordinance I prepared earlier to participate in the One Ohio settlement to allow Jim to file to participate in the separate Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement. So that's all this is about.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
And that's all for the legislation that we have this evening.
Perfect. First of all, we actually do have another late delivery, and this is probably my fault, so I'll own it. Is there a motion to accept late delivery of Resolution 2021-R17E? So moved by Mr. Lippard, second by Mr. Tankersley. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there a motion to do rule suspension for a first and only reading of Resolution 2021-R17E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mrs. Knight. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Mr. Peatmire, I'm going to ask you to go stand at the podium. Carol, join him.
Wow.
I know. Look at me. Come on, Carol, you've been a part of this.
She said to make sure I don't back out.
Is that what it is? Well, if I'd have known that, I wouldn't have let her in because we kind of want you to back out right now. And Mrs. Bouhy, would you please read it in full?
Do you want to come up here, Dave, for fixtures?
Resolution 2021-R17E commending Mark Peatmire for over 30 years of exceptional public service to the City of Sharonville, Ohio. Whereas Mark Peatmire was appointed to Sharonville City Council in 1988, while on council in 1991, the United States went to war with Iraq, and he was called to active duty as a captain in the Army. Mark served six months in Iraq and was awarded the Meritorious Service Medal and National Defense Service Medal for this duty. Whereas after his return to City Council, Mark Peatmire went on to hold the offices of Treasurer and Auditor before becoming Sharonville's Law Director in 2016. Whereas Mark Peatmire has organized the Sharonville Memorial Day Program at Patriot Point since it began. Mark also had made a, has also made a positive impact on many families of Sharonville as a longtime SYO coach in baseball, basketball, and soccer, as well as a basketball coach at St. Michael's. Whereas Mark Peatmire graduated from Roger Bacon High School, Miami University, and the Northern Kentucky University Salmon P. Chase College of Law. Mark passed the bar in 1981 and was hired at the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office, where he still works today. Whereas Mark and his beautiful wife, Carol, have been married for over 45 years. They have raised three children in Sharonville and are now blessed with three grandchildren. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Council of the City of Sharonville that on the occasion of his retirement from the city, and by virtue of his years of outstanding service and dedication to the community, the Sharonville City Council hereby publicly extends their sincere gratitude and appreciation to Mark Peatmire for over 30 years, oh my goodness, of contribution. Where did that come from?
You okay?
I'm just happy for him. I'm fine.
Are you laughing, Terry, or what?
Hey, we're not happy for him.
Oh, my gosh. For over 30 years of contributions to the welfare of the City of Sharonville. And this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure and shall take effect immediately.
Thank you.
Well, we are related.
I know.
Well, that's what we, we did say. She had to read it. So as a tradition that was started by the last law drunk.
Right.
Continue, since we don't have a law director yet, be that I'd like one.
Well, thank you very much.
Here's your 19 crack.
Wow, thank you very much.
Perfect.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, thank you all very much. I wasn't really ready for this, but one thing this council does not have that the council had back when I started were great first names. We had a Virgil, a Dewey, and an Ivy. Outside of that, this council is just, and the elected officials are heads and shoulders above, and nothing to knock them, but things have progressed. You hate to single out individuals because you then don't mention other people, but really four outstanding people, in my opinion, that the city has working right now is Scott, the Budget Director. It just, we've never had anything like him. Jim, as Safety Service Director, has just been so great to work with. Vicki, you've just put a whole new spin on the President of Council. You really make it a very family-like affair. And Kevin is just, as a Sharonville resident, I'm glad he opted to stay as mayor because he's just been, in my, again, my humble opinion, by far, the best mayor we've ever had. So I think Sharonville is in good hands. They'll stay in good hands after I'm gone. And Carol was here to make sure I didn't. And one other good thing I'll say is that, you know, some people, there was that old hillbilly song, "Take this job and shove it." I never felt that way, and I don't feel that way now. I know some people, when they leave, it's like, I'm so sick of that shit. Just get me out of here. And I, I'm really leaving kind of, you know, it's tough to leave, but it's also, we're going to be 68 next year, and it's time to move on. And I'm still working full-time in the prosecutor's office, and business is good there, as you all know, so.
Yeah.
But I, I've really enjoyed my time and thank all of you, and hope to see you in a couple of weeks at my Bon Voyage.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll talk about that. Mark has decided he would like to have a very, very casual event, and we're going to hold that at Third Ivory. You should all have invitations or copies of them on your, on your desk. And it's an open house, so everyone is open. Chief, I'm going to be sending you an email with the invitation, so you can invite your fire department. I'll make sure Jim has it to send out really citywide. We just want people to stop by and say thank you to Mark. We're going to get some appetizers and things like that. It'll be kind of a cash bar if everyone would so inclined. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. Mark said do not wear dress clothes. If you don't come in jeans, don't come. I think that covered it all. We're going to go ahead now and vote on this resolution and pass it, because I'm sure it will. And then we can take a couple minutes real quick, and I made some cookies because he really only asked for cookies and punch.
Okay. Is there a motion? Did I miss that?
No. Is there a motion to pass Resolution 2021-R17E? So moved by Mr. Lippard, second by Mr. Tankersley. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Carol's giving me the look, so yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lippard?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2021-R17E has been approved.
Perfect. Thank you guys very much. We'll take just a couple minutes. Perfect. Thank you, guys, very much. We'll take just a couple minutes.
Congratulations.
I was bragging about it.
All right. Well, we're getting our place back.
You made that sound so official and exciting. And I know, and now I won't stop talking. It's like my first council meeting, I won't stop talking. I just want to let everybody know, we have three members of the Sharonville Fire Department that are on the federal urban search and rescue team. And they were deployed to the condo collapse in Florida, what, six or eight months ago? They were deployed again to a hurricane shortly thereafter. None of our Sharonville team went to that deployment because it was too close to the condo collapse. And then one of our members, Lieutenant Chris Thomas, is actually in Kentucky right now. They were deployed late Sunday night, and they were moved, now I have to look at my text messages. I want to say to Mayfield, Dawson Springs. They were, they were moved to Dawson Springs late yesterday. They're actually doing home-to-home searches. They think they have about 80 people unaccounted for and missing. And everybody's doing well. They're doing 12-hour operational periods, so they are at it 24/7 between half the team working days and half the teams working nights. So I just want to let everybody know, I've checked in with him. He is doing well, and he did want me to sincerely thank council and administration for the support of the fire department. Obviously, without the support you guys all give to the fire department, we don't have the support for those special teams, which is just really awesome if you think about, somebody can hit a button somewhere in Kentucky and get 3,000 firefighters there, all very specially trained in search and rescue and building collapse. So, thank you all for your support, and that's what you want me to pass on, so thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. And that kind of piggybacks now. We have a business in Sharonville that is actually collecting supplies, because one of their plumbers, his whole family lost everything, and that's where he was raised. And so they've taken it upon themselves as a Sharonville business to be a collection site for anybody in the community that wishes to donate the water, the food, the diapers, the cleaning supplies, anything. It can go to Schluter's Plumbing. It's right across from the United Dairy Farmers there on Lebanon Road or Route 42, whichever you prefer to call it. She said their business hours are 8:00 to 2:00, but if you're not there in that time, feel free to just drop it off and put, you know, donation or whatever. They are actually going to take trucks down on Saturday to try to support them. Clothing, they're willing to take anything that you have. So they said it's local. If you would like to donate anything, it can go right there, and you don't have to go out of Sharonville to help and support all these people. So that was that. Huge thank you, yes, for a wonderful day today, for our luncheon. And Saturday was so much fun, and it was Katie and Anna that kind of led that charge, and it was just amazing. If you didn't get down there, they had fire pits. Y'all should have been there. It was kind of nice to have the door open and the fire pits out there. So it is a look of what could be and what is going to be down the road. I want to thank you guys all for all of these donations today, for the Sharonville Community Fund. They're actually looking at a lot of their toys that they may not have to use this year and donating them to Schluter's, because none of those kids are going to have Christmases, probably. So that's, they're trying to help them out. So thank you for all of that and everything you do. Again, Mark's party is Third Eye, June, um, June, January 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00. Of course, we can stay later, but that's just the timeframe that I have, have Mark staying. The rest of us can all stay later. So if everybody wants to come and visit and say hello, 5:00 to 7:00. That's all of my report. We'll go to clerk of council, Mrs. Buhat.
Thanks. I just wanted to clear up that I just get emotional at late deliveries, and it was nothing to do with Mark Peetmeyer.
That's Uncle Mark to you, but I understand completely. Auditor, Mr. Cunningham.
I don't have a report other than to say my goodbye to Mr. Peetmeyer. You're going to be missed, going with a lot of experience and wisdom. I had to fill your shoes in this spot, and I feel sorry for the guy that's got to fill your shoes there. You've done a great job. I mean, you passed the bar in 1981, so. I was 11. We'll see you on January 7th, Mark.
Perfect. Okay, treasurer, Mr. Iry. Okay. Law director, Mr. Peetmeyer?
I've said enough. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
And I, if you didn't hear me before, I will buy the first round at the Third Eye on January 7th, so.
Drink up.
Drink up. Water's cheap, you know.
Water is cheap. And on your agenda, it does say Convention Center. He had an engagement this evening. He's going to come see us in January, because why not? January's going to be a big party. January, don't forget that we are going to be sworn at by Kevin, and that's going to happen around 6:30, get here around 6:20. We're also going to have, since we have a new council person, we're going to have our new council picture taken. Everybody dress appropriately, please. And then we have a lot of swearing. Kevin's going to do a lot of swearing that day, because we have new firefighters being sworn in, we have a new police chief being sworn in, so we have a big night that night. So come prepared. Any residents this evening that wish to be heard? My favorite one's here. Mr. Schmidt?
Jim Schmidt, 1-2, 2-1-5, pick quick place. I just have the quest, the date of the swearing in?
The date of the swearing in is our first mayor, our first meeting, which is January 11th.
Okay.
January 11th, and we are going to do that earlier than our council meeting, so it'll be right around.
You able to come in at 6:30?
You sure can. You're more than welcome. Anybody is welcome to come watch us be sworn at. We do not do it individually. We have always done it as a group, because we work as a group, and I think that's the best way, because it would take over an hour and a half to get us all sworn at. So it's easier just to do it that way, and the mayor graciously volunteered to do it. So we shouldn't take too long. It's going to be like herding cats, getting the picture taken, so that's why it gave us so much time. And thank you, Mr. Schmidt. We look forward to seeing you then. And council committees, community development, Mr. Tankersley?
Thank you. I don't have a report this evening, but I want to bring the attention to the council chambers being decorated again this year. The ladies did a fine job. And Mark, we've known each other a number of years, started out as baseball coaches for our sons. Then whenever I got on council, your advice on things. So I want to wish you the best of luck in your next adventure.
Community services, Mr. Lippert?
Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled to be on January 5 at 4 o'clock, Administrative Conference Room. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Budget and finance, Mr. Cook?
Thank you. No report. Our budget and finance meeting was canceled. I'll move on to project oversight. I submitted the report to Terry, and along with attachment for the Tetra Tech report, reviewed that at the last meeting, discussing why there were cost overruns in the FEMA project. I won't go into great depth. Last council meeting, mayor gave a great overview of what that project was.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And I do want to thank Mr. Peetmeyer for his years of service. And just like Santa, I do believe Carol has a long list of things that you're going to be doing in your free time. Thanks again, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Honored citizens, Mrs. Knight?
Yes, tonight, I'm honoring the, all the Sharonville small businesses. Just try to visit them over this holiday season, because they could really use your business and know-how. And also, I'd like to thank Mark. I really enjoyed working with you on the Memorial Day Committee, and I hope you still kind of, still do that. That'd be great. Thank you.
And law and public safety, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. The next law and public safety committee meeting will be on January 4 in the Administrative Conference Room, 4 o'clock. And again, thank you, Mark, for all the times we spent together. Went through some interesting times, interesting issues, and that it's always, Mark is always a very stable, consistent, middle-of-the-road type individual who looks at the total picture. And it really is, as a comment, it kind of sets the tone for the whole council and the elected officials. We have one goal, what is best for our city. And that is kind of rare in these days among all the electeds. Thank you again, Mark.
All right. Rule suspension motion, first and only reading with immediate effectiveness for ordinances 2021-74E, 2021-75E, 2021-76E, 2021-77E, 2021-78E, 2021-79E, 2021-81E, and 2021-82E. Is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Lovett. Any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And that does carry. We have no unfinished business, so we will go ahead and go directly into new business, please. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. There is a, I do need a motion for late delivery of ordinance 2021-82E. So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mr. Lovett. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And we'll take Mark's late delivery, last piece of legislation.
Be careful, you don't want to make her tear up again.
Trying not to. I'm not looking at her, because I'll tear up.
Ordinance 2021-74E, this is a first reading, and ordinance designating depositories and authorizing the auditor and treasurer to enter into depository agreements.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2021-74E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 2021-74E has been approved. First and only reading of ordinance 2021-75E, an ordinance of the city of Sharonville, Ohio, authorizing employee hourly rates.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2021-75E? So moved by Mrs. Knight, second by Mr. Cook. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt? Ordinance 2021-75E has been approved. First and only reading of ordinance 2021-76E, an ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Sharonville, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2021-76E? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021-76E has been approved. First and only reading of ordinance 2021-77E, a transfer of funds for the year 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2021-77E? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Lippert. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight? Ordinance 2021-76E has been approved. Reading of ordinance 2021 appropriate funds.
Seeing none. Roll call.
Mr.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Lippert?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt? First and only reading of ordinance 2021, contracts with Solutions LLC service.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 21-78E? So moved by Mr. K. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Ordinance 2021, why is there an R? Sorry. No, okay. I was going to scratch it out. 2021-79E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2021-80E, authorizing the safety service director to enter into a contract with the Kleinger's Group.